have really been orphaned, meaning they haven't been moved, or you're sure mom hasn't been back in at least eight consecutive hours. Then you can step in and care for the kittens. Pasco County is a strong and growing community, and through our combined efforts, we can help save lives with three simple words. Leave them be.
Today is the sixth annual Two Good Souls Event, put on by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners. This has been a project we've done for six years. It's our way as public servants that work for the county to give back to our community. For the shoes this year, we collected 2,996, and for socks, it was 3,947. Normally, we collect about 1,500 a year on the average, so this was definitely double than we've done in the past. So, thank you all. You know, this wouldn't be possible without the awesome team that we have working for Pasco County Board of County Commissioners. It's making a huge difference to our students, so thank you.
For its abundance of preserves, parks, and conservation areas, as varied and accommodating as you can imagine, Pasco County has earned a well-deserved reputation as an outdoor lover's paradise. Nearly a third of Pasco County is set aside for conservation to protect the land's natural resources and wildlife habitat, or as preserves where residents and visitors may experience firsthand nature's beauty and variety. Paddle through breathtaking coastal resources at Werner Boy State Park. Pedal through miles of pine flatwoods at Starkey Wilderness Park. Camp deep in the woods at the Green Swamp. Or take a relaxing canoe trip on one of our three rivers. Pasco County's land preservation is an ongoing effort to protect ecological corridors connecting vital public lands. A portion of the penny for Pasco sales tax is annually earmarked for use by the county's environmental lands acquisition and management program, which ensures specified acreage stays protected from development and open for passive recreational use. In Pasco County, everyone pitches in to ensure thoughtful stewardship of the area's natural assets.
I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission 10:00 AM meeting of January 25, 2022. At this time, silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the count that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Here.
Now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on any other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then, we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered for a WebEx link and are currently in the queue. We request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Our first person signed up is Joseph Lepardo.
Good morning.
Morning Commissioners. Morning Administrator. My name is Joseph Lepardo. I live at 4651 Sawgrass Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, Florida. It's right up the street here. It's my first time speaking, so I'm a little nervous.
Deep breath.
I'll be short and sweet. You want me to start the timer? Oh, you got it.
No, we start that on the mic.
So, my issue is going to be, surprise, traffic issue in my neighborhood. I've lived at this address since 1998, bought the house in May of 98, so I've been there almost 24 years. I'm a captain paramedic with Pasco County Fire Rescue. I've been with them for 20 years, stationed at Station 14 at River Ridge. My story is, when we moved into the house, Trouble Creek didn't go through, it was just woods. So, it was a dead end, no traffic. 2000, they opened up Trouble Creek from Rowan to Little, traffic started. They, basically, the topic is they use it as a shortcut from both ways, from Trouble to 54 and from Rowan to 54. And I did a little research, and Google Maps is showing it as a shortcut all the time. No matter where you go in the area, it's giving it the best, fastest time, which is wrong, because the main road should be the ones used, not 10 mile an hour corner where I live. I did a little camera study. I got 600 to 1,000 cars a day going by the house, which I believe is a little bit excessive. My question would be, what is the correct amount of traffic for this area where we live in? It's been getting a little worse since the COVID started, and people have been buying in the area, and we get some more influx of people. I really don't want to pay for repaving the corner a lot I live on, because I think other people that are using it as a shortcut should probably have to chip in, because they're using it. Trucks are using it, everybody's using it, except for the residents, because they live everywhere else, and they can go out different ways. We have kids in the neighborhood. I've seen many instances where cars are whipping through, and kids almost get hit. Got Deer Park Elementary by our house. When it's in session, cars try to cut around it. There's kids everywhere. It's an elementary school. A lot of kids walk to that school, and they use this area as a means to get to school. And then, of course, you got traffic trying to go back and forth from work. What I would like is a little help, maybe get a traffic study. Some of my suggestions would be a three-way stop sign at Cypress Lakes and Sawgrass. If we can get the shortcuts taken out of the Google Maps somehow, I don't know how. More signage in the area. I understand we can't block the roads off and make it isolated. So, actually, I'm just asking for a little help. Maybe you can guide me into somewhere, talk to traffic, or set it up so we can have a traffic study, find out exactly how many cars are going through the area, how fast they're going. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Certainly, a no through trucks. Well, staff will meet with you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Next.
Next, Pastor Troy Peterson.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff. I'm Pastor Troy Peterson, Light of the World Tabernacle, 8114 Leo Kid Road, Port Ritchie, Florida. I'm coming on behalf of Somebody Cares Pasco and Hernando. I know some of you all are familiar with us. And I'm here to encourage you guys to have us head up the invocation prayer at the beginning of the Commissioners' meeting. I just want to share a couple of brief scriptures that kind of nullify that, the importance of praying in Jesus' name. John 16:23, Jesus Christ is encouraging the people. He says, "Most assuredly I say to you, whatever you ask, the Father, in my name, the name of Jesus Christ, he will give it unto you. Until now, you have asked nothing in my name." And so, we see that the only way to the Father is through the Son. And although the invocation is praying to the Almighty God, right? Jesus is that God. And so, I believe wholeheartedly that if we acknowledge Jesus Christ in our Commissioner meetings, then He is going to bless you all and give you guys the wisdom to make the decisions that will make Pasco really great. In 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, the Apostle Paul says, "I exhort you first, in all the supplications..." Now, supplications are specific heartfelt petitions and needs. We have a lot of them here in Pasco County. Some of them are going to be addressed today. Now, believe wholeheartedly that if we pray in Jesus' name before the meetings, Jesus is going to give us the answers and the wisdom to address them specific needs. He says, "Prayers and intercessions, giving thanks made for all men, for kings," that's you guys, kings and queens, "who are all in authority, that we may lead quiet and peaceable lives in all godliness and reverence; for who desires all men to be saved, and to come to the knowledge of that truth, that truth being Jesus Christ. He is the way, the truth, and life. The only way to the Father is to the Son." Verse five, "For there is one God and one mediator between God and men, the man Jesus Christ." See, Jesus Christ is our mediator, okay? And He's interceding on our behalf. And when you acknowledge Him, He is going to lift you up and raise you up and give you the wisdom. And Matthew 6, "And when you pray, don't use vain repetitions as the heathen do, for they think they will be heard by their very many words." And so, not to condemn the invocation or anything like that. And many of you know that Somebody Cares is a very reputable group of pastors that does a lot for this community. What we're willing to do is come in and be chaplains and walk alongside with you guys. Thank you for your time.
Very much. Next.
I apologize, a little problem with the writing. Pastor Danny, and it looks like Pasco?
Yeah, Pasco.
Pasco?
Yeah, so my name's Danny Fields, and I'm with Somebody Cares Pasco. My address is on file, so to follow up what Troy Peterson was talking about. So, I would like to just go ahead and pray for you and for the people here, for all the decisions that are going to be made.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I apologize. We needed your address for the record, please.
Okay, so, yes, I live at 7430 Gimbel Lane, Newport Ritchie, Florida. The zip area is 34653.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Father, we do come to you, and we do knowledge you, the great Creator. And we do stand for, in God we trust, as Americans, as citizens, Lord. I thank you for the work that you have them do, that you put them in this position to be able to make decisions with the faith-based church, government, and the communities, with the stuff that's going to be addressed today. So, Lord, I just ask you to bless each one of them spiritually, mentally, physically, financially, with love, peace, and joy. Lord, I ask you to knit their hearts together in the precious name of Jesus and listen to petitions of the people, and give them wisdom. They've already asked for wisdom, to be able to make decisions to better this county, to better the state of Florida, to hear the needs of the people and come up with solutions, to be able to have the wisdom to go forth, to make things flow, like with the homeless, Lord. So, we lift that up, that they'll have wisdom and strategies together, listening to the people and the things that are going on in our community, so that way they could address these issues. With roads, Lord, traffic, and building roads and new construction, and water and sewer, and all these things are going to be coming up today, Lord, that has been addressed. And they've made decisions on these and made proof. But we thank you that you're going to continue to give them wisdom, and that, like Troy said, we've been lifting them up in prayer with other pastors. So, we come here to bless you. We come here to thank you for your service. And you are listening to the people, and you're going to come up with the solutions so they can see what you're doing for them and for us. And so, we just thank you, Father, that your will be done in the precious name of Jesus. So, bless them and bless all those that serve here and those families that are here. And again, I just want to thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Sorry, we're having some technical issues up here, but thank you very much. Just keep an eye on us, and we'll go like this if it goes out again.
Madam Chair, we have one person registered for the online virtual. However, our indication is she's not there. Elizabeth Gray, is she by chance in the room now?
Okay. Is there anyone here in the room that would like to address the board? Please line up.
If we could have your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Sure, my name is Robert Evans. I live at 5529 Jobeth, over there in Gulf Harbors area. So, I'm a new Pasco County resident, been up here about a year. Lived in Oldsmar since 1989. And I understand you guys are voting or looking at taking over the water system. So, down in Oldsmar, I had reclaimed water. I had trash included. Never spent over 70 bucks a month. Here, it's hundreds of dollars, but sometimes bigger than my electric bill. I think it's outrageous, I think we're being ripped off. So, I'd like to just make sure, show my support, make sure you guys take over the water system and get our rates in line with the rest of Pasco. So, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to our agenda. Now is the time for resolutions. We have one from Commissioner Oakley. All right, let's wait.
Resolution by the Board of County Commissioners, so Resolution Number 22049. Resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Pippin Academies of Pasco County for its service to students with disabilities. Whereas the Pippin Academies was founded as an exceptional student education center in 1999 to serve students with learning disabilities in Hillsborough County, Florida, by providing a therapeutic educational environment to help students with learning disabilities with an individualized education plan to reach their fullest potential developmentally, socio-economic, emotionally, and academically. And whereas after 14 years of success in Hillsborough County, Pippin Academies of Pasco County was founded in November of 2013 after recognizing a growing need for educational services for students with learning disabilities. And whereas Pippin Academies of Pasco County opened its doors in August of 2014, operating out of a shopping center in Newport Ritchie with 200 students in grades 3 through 10. And whereas today, Pippin Academies of Pasco County now serves 325 students in grades 3 through 12, and provides a transition programs for students aged 18 through 22. And whereas Pippin Academies of Pasco County now operates out of their new 14-acre facility in Newport Ritchie, establishing a permanent physical operation to match their years of passion and commitment to Pasco County and the students and families who need them. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes Pippin Academies of Pasco County for its services to students with learning disabilities, done and resolved in regular session with a form present and voting this 25th day of January 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Is anyone here from Pippin Academy?
Yes, I see them all right there.
Come forward. We need to ask them when they first start to read it, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do we have a speaker?
I speak. On behalf of Pippin Academy's Foundation and Pippin Academy's Pasco campus, we're honored to receive this proclamation, acknowledging the hard work of all the teachers, administrators, students, and families that make Pippin Academies a reality. And we're really truly grateful for the support of Pasco County, the County Commission, Chair President Starkey, everyone that has made... President Starkey, everyone that has made Pepin Academy's a reality here in this county. And we hope one day to expand throughout Pasco County and meet more of the needs of this growing community. So, thank you for this opportunity to come and speak, and thank you for acknowledging the great work of all of our teachers and administrators.
Thank you. And Board members, Pepin, at first, I have friends whose children graduated from Pepin in Hillsborough, and they were looking at Pinellas, but we were able to convince them that Pasco had a far greater need than Pinellas, and I think it proved true. And we're so glad you're here, and we look forward to your expansion. Commissioner Oakley, did you want to say something?
I thank each and every one of you for all that you do, and your staff, your teachers. There's a lot of good work happening at Pepin Academy. I certainly appreciate the meeting we had and the idea of what you're trying to do, and hopefully, there'll be more successes as the years come. So, for all your good work, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mariano would like to say something.
Yeah, I'd say way back when, talking with Christian Scolera about trying to come up here and talking about to go down and see what was going on down in Hillsborough, it was phenomenal work that you were doing, and was so glad you decided to come to Pasco. And congratulations on your expansion, new building. And I think you're just going to keep on helping more and more families and really improve the education for kids that otherwise might get left behind. So, thank you for what you do.
You're meeting your future workforce at Pepin, so thank you.
We certainly have a need, so thank you for all of you, everything that you do in serving all of our children.
Thank you. And I just wanted to extend a thank you from Dr. Skronik. Unfortunately, he's not, unfortunately and fortunately, he's not here today. He just had a newborn baby in their home, starting their memories with the baby. So, he definitely wanted me to thank you and make sure that y'all know that he appreciated your support. So, thank you.
And I do hope that we will connect your campus south so that we don't have that crazy runaround. We'll work on that. Is everyone coming down? Okay.
I won't.
Maybe it's not. I need to go east. I'm going to stay up here.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. All right, the next one is a time certain at 1:30, so we'll move to RS3.
Resolution Number 22051, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending the 2021 Star Performer, Star Leader, and Star Team of the Year. Whereas each year, Pasco County recognizes a Star Performer of the Year, Star Leader of the Year, and Star Team of the Year for their accomplishments. And whereas Dr. Christian Glenn has been selected to receive the 2021 Star Performer of the Year Award, Vito Tambasco has been selected to receive the 2021 Star Leader of the Year Award, and Geographic Information Services Team Member Jeremy Edwards, Harvey Hyman, Pam Walton, Nathan Delaman, Darrell Johnson, Libby Teller, Jennifer Helmrich, and Michelle Arnold have been selected to receive the 2021 Star Team of the Year Award. I apologize for mispronunciations. Whereas in order for the organization to become premier, it must attract, grow, and support a workforce of servant leaders that are dedicated to improving the lives of people, contributing to a larger purpose than their individual job, and performing at the highest possible level, day in and day out. And whereas these 2021 award recipients consistently demonstrate Pasco County's core values through an impeccable work ethic, dedication to service excellence, and achieving quality outcomes in every situation. They serve as an example to their fellow team members of going above and beyond and exemplify the expectations of Star Performer of the Year, Star Leader of the Year, and Star Team of the Year. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby congratulates our 2021 Star Award winners for Pasco County and commends them for outstanding efforts in serving our community to create a better future. Done and resolved with a quorum present and voting this 25th day of January 2022.
I'll accept a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I will turn this over to our administrator.
And I think they're in the audience, so they need to all come up here.
Okay. Well, congratulations, and well-earned. I only have one, and there's more than one name.
We'll get copies, but we have awards for them here. I just, real quick, kind of go through the process. Every department recognizes individuals which are sent to the branch level. The branch then picks individuals at the branch level awards who then come to the executive team. And then out of that pool of 3,200 candidates, almost 3,200 candidates, these are the ones that were selected this year as the Star Leader, Star Performer, and then Team of the Year because we want to do a Team of the Year. So, GIS, it's done some pretty tremendous work. So, Dr. Glenn, Vito, and the GIS team, we're all here. Come up to the podium, guys, gals.
Okay, so we have our Star Performer of the Year. Do they want to say anything first? Put you on the spot.
They're out of order, so you got to hear me.
Okay, go ahead.
I would just like to say that being part of the Team of the Year, coming to work is like coming home sometimes, where we've worked together for 15 years, some of us. And we love the opportunities that we've had to learn things and do things that we never thought we would. And it's been a pleasure to work for you all.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, whoever wants to speak, y'all.
They're going to the back of the line.
Just wanted to thank you all very much. I feel very blessed. I tell everyone I have the best job in the world. We help a lot of animals every day. We have an awesome medical team. We have an awesome leadership team. And honestly, we couldn't do the work that we do without you guys and Mike and Spencer, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Be sure to give us your name when you come up.
Vito Tambasco, how you doing? I just wanted to say thank you very much, but this award could have been won by anybody in facilities. With the support group and the people that we have in facilities, it's a great department, and anybody could have won this award. So, I just want to say thank you very much.
Congratulations.
That's great. Congratulations.
All right, squeeze it in. Let me get on the end.
That isn't how we do it. I'll sit behind the top, yeah.
We're missing a frame. We're outframed, but we got one. Congrats, everybody.
All right, everybody ready here, please? Thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Resolution Number 22048, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing James K. Basely for his 35 years of service to the Pasco County Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Department and the Pasco County community.
Oh, yeah, please come up exactly. Come on up and let us have you at the mic.
Whereas James K. Basely started his career with Pasco County Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources 35 years ago as a groundkeeper, and since then has dedicated his career to DRNR as a labor supervisor and park operator three overseeing its grounds and maintenance of up to six parks at a time. And whereas James's professional career had him working closely with a variety of co-sponsored youth organizations, outside user groups, local school athletic teams, and Friends of the Parks organizations, fostering the goals and objectives of DRNR and its commitment to Pasco County citizens, ensuring that each group would have a safe, well-maintained amenities to use. And whereas James K. Basely set the standard for athletic field maintenance in the DRNR department, having his fields in the best possible playing condition year after year, garnishing compliments and praise from a variety of Little League organizations that play at his complex. And whereas James displayed tremendous leadership throughout his career, as he is always willing to train staff members both within and outside of his area of responsibility, which resulted in him working at more than 30 parks within Pasco County's DRNR system. And whereas James K. Basely worked closely with the Shady Hills Little League throughout his career and was instrumental in adding a second softball field at Elsie Logan Memorial Park, which was funded by a grant obtained by the Little League, but was only possible due to James's reconfiguration of the existing fields, fencing, scoreboards, and irrigation. And whereas James always volunteered to work with organizations such as Pasco County Sheriff's Office and the Concourse Council to prepare the grounds, decorate, and clean up for events such as Wilderness Wonderland at the Rotary Pavilion and the Celebration of Life event within Safety Town and Concourse property. And whereas James K. Basely took on numerous field renovations over the years and compiled these renovations typically, sorry, completed these renovations completely, typically, without the need for outside contractors, resulting in improving playing conditions for our citizens and the tens of thousands of dollars in savings. And whereas James K. Basely is a shining example of a servant leader who has dedicated his life to serving the citizens of Pasco County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes James K. Basely for his 35 years of service in the Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Department and serving the citizens of Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with quorum present and voting this 25th day of January 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Well, congratulations. What a great job, I think, to be outside and in the parks all the time.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the good Lord for keeping me healthy to make it the 35 years that I did. And I'd like to thank my wife for putting up with me for all of this, and especially my children. They sacrificed many weekends that I worked while they were children, and I hope they forgive me for it. And I'd like to thank Pasco County for allowing me to work here. It's been a pleasure. I've thought back over the 35 years of how many lives that I may have touched throughout these years, and a number of kids that grew up in the parks now work for Parks Recreation. I watched them grow up as kids, and
Big kids.
Big kids. Some of them that committed violence on me.
Uh-oh.
That's why we were playing, not during work. But it's been a pleasure. I've enjoyed every minute of it. I've watched commissioners come, commissioners go, directors come, directors go, all of them so far in the Parks Recreation Department. And I hope they continue my legacy and my values and my work ethic. And I just give them... They've touched me so many.
Oh.
I just give thanks.
Very nice.
Oh, very sweet.
And thank you.
Yes. As you can tell by the resolution, he has always gone above and beyond. I've always heard the compliments that his fields were the best in Pasco. Thank you for keeping the ballfields. So nice. And of course, we have the beautiful community garden there as well. You will definitely be missed, and I appreciate everything that you have done, for everything that you've done for Elsie Logan and everything you've done for Parks and Recs. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, parks are near and dear to me, you know? Each and every one of you, we appreciate each and every one of you. And I always say that Parks is the heart and soul of Pasco County. I mean, we're a beautiful county. Amazing things are happening here, but it's because of each and every one of you. And James, you look like you've been hitting the gym a little bit as well. So, if you're, I don't know who, you said you guys got a little squabbling for fun. I don't know, I think you might have taken those guys. But we do appreciate you and wish you all the best in your retirement, and I'm sure you'll be continuing to mentor everybody that's standing behind you. So, thank you for your service.
As a mother and coach, for 25 years in youth sports, I've been to almost every field in Pasco, and I was always proud of the conditions that our fields were in. So, great, you know, you have a great legacy, and my guess is you're hanging around, and maybe you can keep these guys in shape. If you see something that shouldn't be happening, a field going down, you know who to call.
He may be wanting to call us.
So, thanks again for all you did, for all the folks in Pasco to have the great parks that we have, and I'm glad to hear so much support here for our Parks Department, so. Jack?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks for your 35 years. As you say, you've seen a lot of people come and go, et cetera. You've seen the economic times where we started with big, major investments with the parks, had to drop it back, but I think you'll see that this place got a solid commitment for the great work you and your team do, that we believe in what you're doing, how important it is for our youth and our families to be allowed there and join our parks. So, thanks for your great service and congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yeah, I want to thank you and all the staff members that work with you and have been able to work under you. And now, when you're retired and away from them, you can tell us what they're doing wrong. And we'll take care of it, put them in place. But basically, you've trained them well, and I doubt if you'll see anything like that with that department because we support that entire department and have been for a long time, ever since I've been here before.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate everything you do.
Well, he was here in the down times when we, when, you know, in the recession. That's the department we cut, Parks and Libraries. We're still clawing our way back, but we're going to get there this year, I promise you.
Yeah. That's great.
All right, Commissioner Mariano is going to come down and give you the plaque, and we'll stand behind. Does that work?
Yeah. It's probably a good day to have this, too. It's a rainy day outside. You guys get to come inside. All right, folks, ready here, please? One, two, three. Everybody's warm. Thank you. I wish to warn all of you that this film... That's it? All right. Congratulations.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, that was RS5. Now, these other ones, these are by name only? Does C6?
Um...
What? Didn't we do five?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, just clicked that up. RS5.
I'm believing this one is by title only? Is that correct? That's correct, okay.
Mac here? It is title only?
No.
Okay.
Resolution Number 22020, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Mac Davis for 16 years of dedicated service to Pasco County's Environmental Lands Acquisition Selection Committee and his ongoing support of the Environmental Lands Acquisition and Management Program.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. What a great guy. I haven't seen Mac in a long time. I was hoping he'd be here.
Well, he's not feeling well, so he couldn't be here. But his dedication to the county was great. And when I first got elected, we were working on a project up in the Sun West area on Arapica Road, and he has a very strong voice, brought people together, talked about what he was trying to do and why, and it led to us actually purchasing that land up to the north of Arapica Road to go right along the Chesapeake's preserves. But after Eland program started, I nominated him, and I'm proud that he served, and he did such a phenomenal job. We're lucky to have a server, so we'll get it to him later on.
Great. Okay, we'll move on to... Are these on the consent agenda? Are we going to read these in name only?
Yes.
Just leaving them on consent?
Panos Konces, Engineering Services, Project Management. This item was pulled and revised because the check we received from Henando County was rounded to the nearest dollar instead of the exact amount. The difference was two cents.
Oh, my goodness. Government.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. It's going to be nice to see that all cleaned up up there. C53?
C53, the item is being revised to include documentation from risk management that was inadvertently omitted.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye opposed? Thank you. And then C57 and C58 are withdrawn. So we are on to the Rs. And Pasco Economic Development Council Quarterly Update. Good morning, Mr. Cronin.
Good morning, and happy Tuesday, everyone. It's Bill Cronin from Pasco EDC. We're located at 1165.
Around there.
You guys know where we're at. I don't mail anything to myself. It's my pleasure today to present to you the quarterly reports for both our agreement with the memorandum of understanding with the Board of County Commissioners, as well as our progress on our agreement with the Penny for Pasco. And I'm going to go through these kind of rapid fire because I also have an announcement to make today, and I know if I do it right now, you won't pay attention to anything I say in the presentation, so just bear with me a little bit here. We are going to start with the MOU slide, the, the other one. There we go. So if you haven't been to Santander yet, Santander Consumer USA had announced a project in Pasco County back September 30th of last year. This photo is their entrance, and if you recall, this is the old Target, Super Target at 54 and Sun Coast. Beautiful facility, and if you look, they even have the gates. It looks like you're going into a big high-rise with the staff coming in. This was part of Leadership Pasco that we were able to tour the facility. As far as our report card goes for our normal business, we are still doing really well. We've got three successes so far. That number's going to change. Our goal is 10 for, I'm sorry, 12 for the year. But when you look at where the wins and the leads are coming from, first of all, our pipeline, 76 projects, active projects, that's people who actually are looking to relocate, the real projects, that's about double what we normally have. So pipeline is full, the leads are doing great, and if you look at the types of activity, I know that Chair Stark, you'll be very happy to see all the advanced manufacturing that's continuing to look in our area. When you look at the, what makes up those wins that we have so far, we're knocking the capital investment numbers out of the park. Everything's expensive these days for construction and land, but we're going to do really well this year. Looking at what we're doing with existing business, we're still going out visiting companies. Companies are open, they want to meet with people, they want to grow their business. We had 15 face-to-face meetings this quarter, and then also 10 workforce referrals. We had two conferences. We actually attended two large trade shows this last quarter, which were NEOP and MD&amp;M East, and this is part of the MOU. We'll talk a little bit more about some of the international stuff under Penny for Pasco. But it just goes to show you that businesses are open again, things are moving, and people are marketing their communities, and it is a competitive environment for us out there. We attended a number of events this quarter, and then also presentations to our locals. We had five organizations that asked us to come and present. This slide, I usually go over fairly quickly, but I know there's probably going to be a question, because this is earned marketing value, and for a lot of people, we don't understand, you know, can you put this in the bank? Can you take it with you? No, not really. But if we were to go out and purchase this type of media advertising that we're getting, or the, the referenced shouts and likes and all those types of things, it would be worth about $2.5 million. And if you see that big swoop up this last, at the end of the quarter, that was because we leveraged a program that Duke was using, as well as another press release with Santander. So we piggyback and leverage on our private sector partners to get more and more information out about Pasco. So it's not just our tax dollars that are out there marketing Pasco. Web analytics, again, some of those things that I think at nighttime you might want to read right before bed. And then audience, we're at almost 10,000 on our social media marketing highlights. Up to 91 investors this, this year. So far on the private sector side, we've raised over $200,000 of our goal of over a half a million. We have 43 board members and policy council members, and the two newest investors are City National Bank of Florida and also Charles Perry Partners Incorporated, or CPPI that you might know them as. Legislative agenda is pretty full and robust this year. We're working together, of course, with Ralph on your items and with our stakeholders at the policy council, and I see a lot of those items moving very quickly this year. We'll, we'll be heading back up to Tallahassee as well next month to continue to, to push and advocate for our, our items. Two task forces have been set up, first of which will be about the strategic plan. Our strategic plan 2.0 expired this year. I anticipate it's going to look really similar, maybe with a little less emphasis on product since we now have product. We also have a task force that's going to revisit the two ULI TAP studies that were done, that the BOCC paid for back in '08 and '13. So it's time to dust them off and see if those recommendations are still good. So we, we're anticipating a lot of great interconnectivity between the county staff and our staff as we continue on both of those task forces. And then upcoming events for the MOU, Grow Pasco, February 26th, that's an all-day event. We've got several speakers coming, I think close to 50 different leaders that will be teaching that day for startups and small business. The keynote is Mr. Peter Kajiyama, who wrote For the Love of Cities. He's out of St. Petersburg, Florida. Net Fest, Net Fest is back to Starkey area. So we're, we're going to be at Starkey Market the end of March, I think March 31st is the safe, the date we'll be putting out, and we're still talking about whether or not we'll continue to do the cowboy-themed events of the past, so hopefully they'll give a boost to our westernware companies here in the area, and then annual awards will go back to September again. So I'm going to head over to the Penny for Pasco, unless you have any questions on the MOU. Okay. All right.
Oh, man. Oh, I thought we went dark again. We're good.
Okay. Oops. While we're waiting for that, I'll just say, I think it was really cool that we had pastors come in and pray for us today. I pray for all you guys on a regular basis personally, too. How fun. So Penny for Pasco. If you look, you see a couple familiar faces in the, in the picture there, our chair and Commissioner Fitzpatrick joined us, as well as Representative Amber Mariano. And what you see there is a signing ceremony with the village or the town of Germersheim. And Germersheim, Germany, we've got a long relationship, thanks to exchanges with River Ridge High School on the robotics program, and we finally, after many trips back and forth between, have finally put something in place where we've got an official agreement to promote each other's regions and to do more exchanges. Mind you, this was in the middle of COVID, too. So this was, this was November. We'll talk about the international piece of it. Ready sites in Eagle Industrial Park, says announcement pending. We're going to get rid of that in a couple minutes, okay? So Eagle Industrial Park is taken, one of our ready sites is now off the books, somebody's taken it, the program is working. Remember, this was all about making sure that we had product. That is one of the sites that we'll be announcing. International program, and I know that Commissioner Stark is excited about this as well, too. Back in, in October, at the beginning of the quarter, we led a trade mission, a five-track trade mission for Pasco. This is similar to what the governor would do for Team Florida events, where you've got multiple tracks, but we had trade, we had a political track, we had a foreign direct investment track, we had a track for Moffitt Cancer Center, and then we had a workforce development track where we learned best practices as it relates to apprenticeships and their dual system of enrollment. Out of those meetings, we've got 11 strong meetings, that eight of them are actually projects. Usually for us to have a trip of that size, if you get one or two really good projects, that's a home run. To get eight, we knocked it out of the park. So in of the other three, the other three are leads. So this is one that we can continue to see activity. I anticipate an announcement sometime soon on one of those big projects as well, coming from overseas.
And Bill, you may not be aware that one of the companies from Carlsberg came and visited our utilities company and showing them the state-of-the-art process they use for lining pipes.
That's right.
And then Representative Mariano was so impressed with how Germany integrates workforce training and the mindset that you need to be thinking about a career in the schools, that she asked us to ask for an additional appropriation, and we're expanding AM Skills into another high school here. So it was a great trip. We're going to talk about it more when the German Consul General visits us, which I'll say in Commissioner Allen's, so, but great trip. Great job, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and we've had a couple companies that have already visited from Germany since that time, and as you mentioned, we've got the Consul General coming to visit shortly as well, too, acknowledging our work. And Lufthansa visited us a couple weeks ago as well, too. So Lufthansa has started new direct flights into Frankfurt. So we're making a big difference for Tampa Bay, but also on the international scene as well.
We were the first group
That's right.
...trade mission to go into Germany since the pandemic started.
Yeah, and, and Switzerland as well.
Switzerland, yeah.
So, good, good trip and very productive, and I think you'll see several different types of return trips in, in the future, especially with that new agreement in place. We also had our Global Competitiveness Committee meeting during this quarter, and then we participated as part of the three-county region with the Select Florida Conference, it was called. It's like Select USA, but it's Select Florida. Continue to do enhanced marketing on the ready sites, getting lots of looks there. Workforce Connects assisted 15 targeted industries already in the first quarter. 487 visitors are using, use the website for matching for Workforce Connect, so that's wonderful, because we don't always see those people face-to-face. They use our, our equipment and our system to do that matching. And then the Executive Success Program, and that's a new one, you're going to see more and more of that this year, but for those new companies that moved in, so Metler and companies like that, that, that we've all worked with, this is a way to get them acclimated into our programs, and they're all taking part of a, almost like a CEO roundtable program or Leadership Pasco program throughout the year to learn about economic development. And we hope that they'll become more engaged at the end of that process. And then Smart Start hosted a vendor fair. The food part of Smart Start is just growing like gangbusters. We have 47 members right now in the incubators. That's the most we've had. And the crate is now open, but the crate park is not open yet, but you can visit the crate over at The Grove next door of their incubator. I am going to stop there because I think you guys want to hear about something else, another announcement, that we did a sneak peek last Thursday at the economic forecast, but I'll start out to say, it's a great day in Pasco County. Regardless of the rain and the cold, it is once again a great day in Pasco County. Happy to announce that Amazon has committed to build a 500,000-square-foot facility up at State Road 52 and Bellamy Brothers Road. This facility is going to employ over 500 people, and this is not your typical sorting facility. This is the good stuff, you guys. There's, there's some, there's some Amazon projects that are out there that may not be as competitive, because they have to be in certain areas. This is one that you fight over, and because there's a certain amount of technology and robotics, this is a robotics center, which means that our students at the career academies studying robotics, people working through AM Skills, all have the opportunity to be able to work on these machines and robots. These are not the low-paying jobs of, of typical sorters. This is the good stuff, and we got their attention because of the way that we operated and handled their first project. We told them, we want the good stuff. They listened, they came back, and they delivered. So at 10 o'clock this morning, Amazon issued a national press release about four of these competitive projects in Florida. Ours was one, but we just issued the press release today with quotes, of course, from the board, too, to, to announce it in Pasco, because the Pasco one is one of the coolest ones. And I do have a quote from Amazon that they sent me late, late last night, and he said, and this is from Sam Blatt, the project manager for, for Amazon, he said, "To Pasco County, given Eagle Industrial Park's location and the availability of the quality of our workforce in the region, Pasco County was a natural fit for Amazon's new sort center." Shared, Sam Blatt, Economic Development Manager for Amazon. "It's been a pleasure working with Pasco County's staff and the team at the Pasco EDC." That will be in your, your email boxes right now with the new announcement on there. They are breaking ground any day. You'll see the activity, and it'll probably be about 11 months of construction, so we should be looking at the end of the year of a state-of-the-art facility right at 52 and Bellamy.
It's a big deal.
Just a shout out to the staff, too. So Dave Engel and Sally Sherman, the staff, as well as utilities and Mike's group, worked really closely on this project. You might remember, it was part of the CP EV footprint out there and was one of the first to break out, showing that the activity is there. So we are ready.
And AM Skills has received funding to really blow up our robotics training program, and we're going to be working with Wendell Crin with their Robotics Academy, so we're real excited to be able to help Amazon get their workforce. It's just perfect. Yeah.
And appreciate it. And Bill, congratulations, and David and the entire team, congratulations. What a big win for Pasco County, and really the entire region, when we think about our region as well. And I'm happy to join your team. I'll be with you again this Wednesday, so excited about that. Question for you, and maybe David as well. So we see a facility like this come to Pasco County, and the quote we just heard was, because of the workforce you have in the area, right? We look around 54 and the 56 corridor, and one of the objectives of this board and your team and David's team is to help us bring jobs and/or create jobs in Pasco County, so our residents don't continue to leave this area on a daily basis.
That's right.
That was one of my objectives when I first came on the board in 2014, and I know my fellow commissioners as well. So we look at the growth along the 54 and 56 corridor. What can we do, or what should we do to preserve some of these job-creating sites along that corridor? Because as we run out of land, and David, you can come up as well, my friend, as we continue to grow in that area and we lose, and we've seen that happen recently, losing some of these job-creating sites to things that cannot create the jobs that we need, eventually we could run out of space.
Yeah.
What could we build more, have more spec space? Could we, could we have more ready sites? What can we do as a board to assure our residents five, 10, 20 years down the road, that jobs are going to be here, so we don't have to leave this area all the time?
Yeah. And, and you know I have strong feelings on this as well, too, because it is the, the solution to a lot of our transportation
when we think about our region as well. And I'm happy to join your team. I'll be with you again this Wednesday. So excited about that. Question for you and maybe David as well. So we see a facility like this come to Pasco County. And the quote we just heard was, because of the workforce you have in the area, right? We look around 54 and the 56 corridor. And one of the objectives of this board and your team and David's team is to help us bring jobs and/or create jobs in Pasco County, so our residents don't continue to leave this area on a daily basis. That was one of my objectives when I first came on the board in 2014. And I know my fellow commissioners as well. So we look at the growth along the 54 and 56 corridor. What can we do or what should we do to preserve some of these job-creating sites along that corridor? Because as we run out of land, and David, you can come up as well, my friend, as we continue to grow in that area and we lose, and we've seen that happen recently, losing some of these job-creating sites to things that cannot create the jobs that we need, eventually we could run out of space.
Yeah.
What could we build more, have more spec space? Could we, could we have more ready sites? What can we do as a board to assure our residents five, 10, 20 years down the road, that jobs are going to be here, so we don't have to leave this area all the time?
Yeah. And, and you know I have strong feelings on this as well, too. Because it is the, the solution to a lot of our transportation problems is to make sure people are employed here and not somewhere else. And, and if you take that a step further and you look at MPUDs, the way they're designed, you can actually live, work, and play in one of these MPUDs. You can have a job, live there and shop there in commercial. And that's what they were designed to do, is to have everything there contained and also to make sure the tax base was paying for each, each of those components. But I think the, the main thing, and I look at you guys for this as well, too, is to make sure that, that the developers are continuing to, to commit and, and, and take care of those entitlements regarding employment center. That we cannot trade employment center entitlements out for anything. I think that the jobs come first. If, if you're going to trade it for housing and things like that, it, it totally throws the whole purpose of an MPUD out the window. Because if you don't have the jobs in the MPUD, then you're getting on the road and you're driving somewhere else every day. So I, I would say, all of these MPUDs and these large planned unit developments, we need to continue to make sure that everyone still honors those employment center entitlements and, and hopefully fills those first. Because if you fill the employment center first, there's less chance of residents saying, oh, no, we don't want that company here. Once people are in place, they don't always like to have somebody locate next to them. But if we get the jobs there first, then the people who have the jobs are going to want to locate right next to them.
Madam Chair, follow-up question. How important it is, and David, you can jump in as well, is when you look at our major corridors like 54, 52, State Road 56, to have those sites along that corridor because of the access to 75, the Sun Coast, to 75?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so anytime you're moving people, you want to be close to, to a highway. And you look at where, where Moffett has located, that's 14,000 jobs. You all have made vast improvements on transportation network to serve them. But that is workforce that will be coming from everywhere. So making sure that the, the transportation's there, 54, 56, same exact thing. If you've got transportation set up to move people, that's where your jobs should also be.
And it's, I would, I would assume it's difficult. Once you lose a site to something, you can't usually typically get that back, right?
That's, that's exactly, that, well, unless you redevelop that.
Correct.
We don't want to be in the redevelopment business. We'd rather be in the development business.
Would you agree, David?
Well, I do agree, sir. And your question is a very important question. And to that end, the Planning and Development Department and the Office of Economic Growth, with the cooperation and participation of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council is doing a light industrial IL employment center study. And we should have that study available for presentation sometime this spring. We want to do an assessment of the county and our land use and provide adequate guarantees and recommendations to the board to preserve the space. We are getting a tremendous amount of development opportunity moving up to I-4. And in fact, the, the county administration is, and OEG is working with a developer now to increase, not decrease, the industrial entitlements.
So I'm hearing from a lot of the residents, a lot of the citizens in the area, that, you know, they're getting back to work, you know, in the offices. They're not, you know, we know a lot of people came home. There's still some people home. But more and more people are going back to the offices again. Depending on, you know, what your, your strategy with, is within your corporation, that's happening more and more. But I'm hearing from people that are having a difficult time finding office space in Pasco County. Now, is that a good thing? That means, yeah, people are having, you know, they want to keep their companies here. But again, what can we do as a team to increase that office space that needed? And it doesn't have to be, you know, a company that's going to take up 500,000 square foot. We have a lot of small businesses that need, you know, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000. Is there more opportunities to have either the ready sites or spec office buildings? Especially, I think about, too, and I hate to be parochial and talk about districts, but, you know, that's one of the issues I'm having in my district and District 2, is that people are having to go outside the area to find office space. A lot of entrepreneurs in that area. They don't, and as they grow, they can't always work in other homes anymore. We heard that recently from some of the, some, some folks during a public hearing about how they're looking for office space now, but they can't find it, because it's full. Is there opportunities now to work together as a team to bring more spec office along that 54, 56 corridor, especially in the Land O' Lakes, Land O' Lakes, Wesley Chapel, kind of Lutz area? I would say east of 41, east of 41, east of Collier, for example. We're in desperate need in that area.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so I think, and we're touching on, we're touching on the, the market and the supply and demand that's there. When, when most of us first got here, there was very little space, office or sites. And we saw, we put some effort on sites. We do have some spec office that's available, different pricing and different Class A, Class B, those types of things. But what it's going to take, it's, it's about risk mitigation for these investors. So if there's a way, for example, the, the spec buildings that we have, we're able to use Penny for, for Pasco to help mitigate that risk, to provide some guarantees if they were able to, to, to build it and market it towards the type of jobs that we're looking for.
What about opportunities along between 41 and Sabre Speed House?
Yeah. So I think, I think that comes down to developer looking at the risk and the return. So if there's a return that's higher for retail, for example, than for office, somebody's got to be able to look at that gap and say, can we fill that gap to make it attractive for them to do speculative office?
But through the penny, you know, for the penny, like you talked about, what we did over at, around, you know, Commissioner Starkey's district out there, beautiful building that we went to recently.
Yeah. And I think, I think there's a receptivity still to talk about white paper-type applications, should we have somebody that is keenly interested in doing spec? But spec is risk. And all of this is about risk mitigation and how we can lower the risk for those investors.
Thank you.
Mr. Cronin, do you, are you, do you think we need more ready sites? Do we need, I, I agree that we need more industrial sites. Should we be out there looking for more ready sites? And how would you suggest we do that?
So, so we have Tom Ryan, who is our Business Recruitment Director. And he is, his forte is recruitment and getting out and selling. He is also a real estate by, by trade. He's a, a Realtor. He understands that. He's been responsible for the Ready Sites Program since we started it. We've got about 2,700 acres available right now of ready sites. Some are better for certain industries than other. So it really depends on what type of industry, if we need to get another site. I've asked him to, to focus right now on continuing to market the sites that we have and getting more jobs in there, because success begets success. I mean, I think now that you see one of the ready sites going to a big company like this, we'll start getting calls for the other ready sites as well. But the answer is yes. We're always short of product here. And especially buildings and speculative space, but then also land as well, too.
And so a lot of the spaces that, I mean, most, all these studies, all these spaces that I've seen here are greenfield spaces. What about redevelopment on important corridors? For example, 41, 19?
Yeah.
And, and investments and incentives in areas where we can redevelop, that where we've seen property values go down and we have, we have built empty, Commissioner Moore, we have empty office spaces all over this area. So I welcome anyone to come down here. There's a lot of opportunity on 54 with, with empty spaces. So I, I really, for me, in the next few years, my focus can be on, especially my district, redevelopment, so that we take some of these buildings that are just sitting there blighted and empty, and we can refill those with some of the folks you're bringing here. That would be a really big win for the county.
And you've had, you've had three really good wins in the redevelopment area that did exactly that over the last couple of years. And that would be Florida Avenue Brewing, which was an incredible redevelopment. Santander, which was the target building. And, and I'll tell you, that building is beautiful, but so hard to find a tenant that's going to take that big a space. And, and that worked out well. And then lastly, you, you had Inshurim over in 19 that was in the mall, that took one of the old strip stores there and now has hundreds of employees working in, in the IT area.
And I think, and Dave's report, David Engel's report is going to come next. You're going to hear some more about some of these opportunities.
Yeah.
And of course, it's exciting what's going on up in your area.
That's right. And Lakeview, too.
You can't forget 52 and everything that's happened there. David knows that we've been talking about all the jobs that are coming to that area.
Yep.
And they're just not quite, they're just reaching that radar and coming in. So there's a lot of jobs going to be right there.
Get ready. I think with 3998 and 301, all of that new realignment, you've got a lot of people that are coming down I-4, going straight up into Pasco County, rather than coming all the way to 75 and heading north.
Right.
Of course, all those, all those jobs will require housing.
Exactly.
Afford, and some of them need to be somewhat affordable.
Yeah, they got to be affordable and workforce housing.
We're going to have everyone living in Hernando and driving down here if we don't watch it, so.
Yeah.
And do we have a comparison of, we have about 9,000 single-family home permits that we approved last year? And then how many jobs did we approve last year? I think we approve, we've brought in more jobs last year than approved single-family homes.
Yeah. So, so the jobs, your jobs are usually on a three-to-five-year forecast window. So the jobs that we announce, so for example, the, the announced 500 jobs today, obviously those jobs don't start until after the building's built.
Correct.
Okay. So, so some of that is forecasted and some of it is, is real-time. But you still have a lot of people moving here regardless.
But we still have that large percentage. And Commissioner Mariano brought it up last week, too. 50 to 60% of the people that are leaving to go to Hillsborough County every single day for their jobs. We want to keep them here.
Exactly.
Yeah. We'd love, we would, we would love to keep them here. And not have them clogging the roads. I did listen to a, a report this week on that the Tampa Bay area has like a 0.5% availability of housing. It, I mean, we're, we have one of the tightest housing markets in the United States.
One of the most expensive.
And one of the most expensive.
And people still are moving here. So what's that tell you? We've done some good stuff.
We're doing good things.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Very much. Madam Chair?
Yeah. Okay. We got another presentation, so.
All right. Bill, the job you've done since you got here has been phenomenal. It just builds and builds momentum. We are now, as you say, getting all these free advertisements that just help us promote with great, great stories. Priceless, I think. I think Commissioner Starkey touched on a good thing, is the redevelopment is, is a big issue. And as far as office space goes, I'll tell you, when Representative Mariano was looking for office space, the selection's minimal.
Yeah.
Now, the great job we did, I think, down in Trinity was great. I think if we can do something along the 19 corridor, it would be great. We can create some jobs that'll be there, create some opportunities. We're willing to look forward to it. What I'd like you to take a look at as well, though, is take a look at Pinellas County, what they do for redevelopment, their regulations compared to ours. Because we're, we treat, we treat it differently than what they do for different reasons. And that may be a hindrance that's coming up. I, I'm told by people even in the market that is a place. If you would take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. And just keep one site in mind, if you had it on your slide, was the HCA Regional Hospital up in Bayonet Point, their expansion.
Yep.
$100 million coming in, 100 new jobs plus more. There's going to be more office space out and around there, too. If we can reach out and kind of like scope that situation out a little bit more and, and find something to where these expansions are going to come and everything else around it would be awesome. But thanks for the tremendous work you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. One more.
I think David has something to add, because he's sitting there like a little kid.
He's got a great report coming.
I just had some anecdotal comments. I, I just wanted to, you know, congratulate everybody about Amazon. And I wanted to point out that our current planning team and Matthew Campbell, our Business Support Manager, were integral and intrinsic in getting this project off the ground from a technical side. It's a very complicated state-of-the-art facility. And I wanted to put them on the table and give them our thanks. Secondly, for the first time since I've been here, the rate of job growth in Pasco County year over year was 7% against out residential, which was 5%. We've never had that acceleration and rate of change.
And, and you know, when, I recall, too, that my husband, when he was chair at PEDC, he said that the manufacturing was 4% of our local economy. And look at where we're going now. Look at where we're going now.
I agree. We're, we're really one of the only places that has land and people. And when these big projects look, you know, other places in Florida have people. They don't have land. And if they've got land, they don't have people. So we're, we're in a really good situation right now.
Yeah. Great job. Thanks. Okay. Now we move on to.
Madam Chair?
David.
My presentation is here.
Oh, okay.
Just come in the door.
If you want to go ahead and do that right now.
That'd be great.
And then we'll have David. David, you can take, well, Di, okay.
I like their, I like their outfits.
Yeah. We're going to stay away, though, Jack. We'll stand back here.
Oh, there you go. Hey, there you go.
I remember when we did this in Date City. Commissioner Oakley, were you on the board when we, we had a bus rider? Actually, she was over 100. And she rides, she was riding our buses everywhere. Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And she walked up to the podium.
Yeah, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah. Come on up, all the way up, please. Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Resolution 22053. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, congratulating Alice Proctor on celebrating her 100th birthday.
Yeah.
Whereas Alice Proctor was born on December 24, 1921, in St. John, New Brunswick, Canada. She met John Dwyer in the 10th grade and married him on January 2, 1943. They had two sons, John Dwyer, age 76, and Rip Dyer, age 74. And whereas Alice graduated from high school in 1939 with a full scholarship to the Juilliard School of Music in New York City, however, the era of World War II called her to fulfill a different duty, preventing her from attending Juilliard. And whereas after the death of her first husband, Alice Proctor remarried in 1957, had one daughter, Debbie Proctor. She is the ground, proud grandmother of eight grandchildren and a great-grandmother of 12 great-grandchildren. And whereas Alice was a member of the Cottage Park Yacht Club and volunteered to assist the mothers' club with organizing sports. She enjoyed playing bridge with her friends every Friday night and also enjoyed attending the Commodore Ball to socialize with her friends. And whereas although Alice was wheelchair-bound because of multiple sclerosis, she never let that stop her from enjoying life and had the opportunity to travel to Europe and visited Germany, France, Switzerland, northern Italy, and the shoe. And whereas Alice started following the Boston Patriots in 1963 and continued to follow with them when their name changed to the New England Patriots. And whereas Alice is a big fan of Tom Brady, and when he moved to Florida in 1983, she was ecstatic to learn that Tom Brady was moving to Tampa Bay in 2020 and happier to know she would be able to see him on television playing for the Buccaneers. And whereas Alice has always remained positive and continues to inspire everyone around her to always do their best, and her joys, or and her greatest joys in life is having her family nearby and watching Tom Brady play football. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby congratulates Alice Proctor on celebrating her 100th birthday, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 25th day of January 2022.
With approval?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Well, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much.
This is Commissioner Mariano, so we're going to let him take the mic and run with it.
I'm going to come down there in just a second. I just wanted to talk to you so everyone could hear as well. When I saw the picture in the Sun Coast News, I said, I got to try to make something happen. So I called Brian Ford from the Tampa Bay Bucks. He reached out, we reached out through the paper, through your caregivers, and then made a contact where I guess they sent you a package. And I want to tell you that they were so thrilled with you and trying to help you get to see Tom Brady, and the tickets weren't able to make it happen just the way, you know, at 100 years old, we want to make sure she's going to be inside. They tried to make that happen and just it didn't quite work out with the weather. They didn't want her outside. It was kind of funny, they said, well, we want to make sure they're in a safe environment so they don't get hurt, sick, and difficulty getting there. So they're working on it and hopefully next year we'll make something happen. But they want to make sure, as I said, you're 100 years old, well, your kid's got to be 70, 75, so we've got to make sure we protect them. So I understand you got a package. I'm delighted to hear that, and I'm delighted that you were able to come out here with the family to come out here and accept this resolution at being 100 years old. And again, I got your spirit, too.
All right.
All right, we're going to stand here?
Yeah.
I just noticed Jack says Mariano on the back. How did he do that?
He plays. He's, you didn't know he was playing, he's on the practice squad.
At Regional Planning Council, I'm always talking with Sean Sullivan, all about the Bucks, the Lightning, et cetera. And talking about the Bucks so much, and Tom Brady coming down from, he's from New England as well.
Oh, yeah.
But he says, you know what? Instead of giving you a big picture frame or something else, he goes, I want to get you this Buck shirt.
That's great.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We're going to try to make some good happen for you next year as well, but I hope you like the way they treated you with the package and all.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Thank you.
All right. Picture right here?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
On my mask.
Sorry she had to come on such, in such bad way.
Yeah.
You can take it off if you want.
Let's move Alice in the back here so the Board of County Commissioners get a picture.
Is she okay?
That's awesome.
You'd like to swing it right around here?
We should send this to the Bucks.
Pretty jersey there. They've got pretty jerseys.
You guys want to come in?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Here we go. All right, one more. Okay.
All these phones have been given. All right.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
All right, now we're going to have the Department of Economic Growth, Office of Economic Growth. Thank you very much. Wow. Here, pass these down.
Good morning. My name is David Engel. I'm your Economic Growth Director, and I am so happy here today to focus on the Route 19 corridor. It's been a corridor for probably 30 years of disinvestment and falling property values and deteriorating pockets, and we're at an inflection point where the corridor is going to be more focused on with strategic programming, deliverables, and economic growth and job creation. And to get the program started, the Board of County Commissioners allowed us some seed money out of the American Rescue Plan, and we are working towards utilizing that money effectively and efficiently. About six months ago, the Office of Economic Growth contacted the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council once we heard they had additional CARES Act money, and the Planning Council very generously worked with us in preparing and presenting a study that you'll see in a moment. And I want to thank the Planning Department here in the county for assisting us and providing technical support. The following is a visualization study of Route 19, and it is consistent with the comprehensive plan of Pasco County, the Harbors Plan, and also the adopted strategic plan of the Board of County Commissioners. I'd like to introduce you to Sarah Vitale, who is a principal and a key participant in generating this study. Thank you.
Great. Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Sarah Vitale. I'm a senior planner and urban designer with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and I'm also joined by my colleagues, Harry Walsh, who's our economic development planner, and Raini DeShazos in the audience, he's our chief of staff. And I have a lot to cover, so I'm going to move quickly to make sure that we can get through my presentation and then leave time for questions and discussion. But first, for those who are unfamiliar with our Regional Planning Council, TBRPC, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, is made up of 27 member governments that span across the six county region. This year, we're celebrating our 60th anniversary, we've been around since 1962, serving the region. Our staff provides planning support for cross-jurisdictional issues that affect our members, including protecting the environment, planning for economic development, and preparing for hurricanes. Pasco County is one of our member governments, with Commissioner Mariano serving as our past Chair last year, and he's our current council representative. So what brings us here before you today? TBRPC has provided its member governments with decision-support technical assistance in urban design and economic analysis, among other planning areas. The Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, funding has allowed us to offer these services to member governments at no cost for economic development projects. So what I'm going to cover today was completely funded by the CARES Act, provided at no cost to the county. Back in July of 2021, we began working with Pasco County to create redevelopment scenarios for key underperforming shopping centers and commercial plazas within the US-19 corridor. Our process was to merge 3D visualization and urban design with economic analysis to explore and test different ideas for the corridor, helping the county to reimagine what's possible within key activity nodes. So our study began in July and was completed in November, so it's about a five-month process. Our, the deliverables for this project include not just the report, which is full of guidance and planning ideas for the US-19 corridor, but also a 3D model and a 3D flyover animation, which can be used in a variety of ways to help illustrate these ideas, for example, in future planning projects and in ongoing community engagement. The report is broken down into two sections and covers in great detail these different topic areas. For the sake of time, I'll provide an overview of some of the report's main takeaways for each section, and then I'll fly you through the 3D modeling that was created to get us thinking about potential future redevelopment in these underperforming areas. The focus for the study is the West Market area of Pasco County, also called the Harbors Area. And when we're thinking about long-term investments in capital infrastructure and services for the Harbors Area, it's very important to build and develop in a way that's going to be resilient now and into the future. And one of the main resiliency challenges for the Harbors Area is flooding. The photos on the left are a reminder from recent history, Tropical Storm Debbie back in 2012, which brought with it a lot of disruptive flooding. Approximately 44% of the total land area of the Harbors falls within the coastal high-hazard area. That's the area below the elevation of a Category 1 hurricane. So that helps us understand the current risks, but there's also the future sea level risk to consider, which can compound the flooding impacts. In this map on the right, we've taken the Harbors Area and layered in future flooding scenarios. The lightest blue is projected sea level rise in the year 2045, according to NOAA's intermediate high projections. The royal darker blue is sea level rise in 2045 during a king tide, which expands that flooding area a bit further inland. The king tide is a term used to describe exceptionally high tides that can occur during a new or full moon. And then the darkest blue represents the compounded effects of sea level rise in 2045 plus the impacts of a Category 3 storm surge. So to best prepare the US-19 corridor for an economically successful and strong future, this theme of resiliency and managing floodwaters was carried through into our conceptual planning and design process. Development form and character. The US-19 corridor itself is like a main artery of activity within Pasco County. For many who live here, they travel frequently on US-19 to get to work, school, home, and for visitors either coming from north or south, US-19 is likely their first impression of Pasco County, and we all know that first impressions are very important. The right development form and character can go a long way towards creating economic growth. Today, the strip mall, the fragmented and automobile-oriented style of development does not necessarily inspire economic activity. There are a lot of vacant and underutilized properties, aging building stock, and generally the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure could be vastly improved so that people feel like they have more options to get around and to do so safely. So that section of the plan kind of outlines those key areas of concern. The economic development section of the report, which begins on page 14, provides a few case study examples of corridor redevelopment plans, highlighting how development form and character can incentivize investments and lead to economic growth. One is the case study of Arlington, Virginia, where they transitioned key activity areas away from this strip mall style of development, where everyone parks in the front. You see a little photo there of that style, and could transition to a more walkable urban environment designed to engage people at the street level with form-based codes.
That's a vertical mixed-use building there on the bottom right?
Yes.
Thank you.
So for the development of the 3D visualizations, instead of focusing on the entire US-19 corridor, we took a closer look at key activity nodes within the corridor. This method of narrowing into activity nodes is a recommendation from the county's 2013 West Market Area Redevelopment and Infill Plan, also called the Harbors Plan. So the Harbors Plan identifies 13 nodes, but within our project's timeframe and scope, we were able to really narrow in on four nodes across the Harbors Area, which are listed here from north to south. Number one is the Hudson Avenue node. Number two, Gulfview Square Mall. Number three, Newport Ritchie, specifically the Gateway District at Main Street, and number four, Universal Plaza. And in the report, we provide development considerations, case studies. We call out potential development opportunities within each of those four nodes, and we highlight vacant parcels and corridor attractions that exist within a half-mile buffer. Within our scope, we were able to develop detailed scenarios for two of those nodes, the first being the Gulfview Square Mall, which has been in decline over the years. There are many vacancies within the mall and then flooding challenges surrounding the mall. So the decline of malls isn't just a local problem, it's felt across the country for many different reasons, particularly online shopping. COVID certainly doesn't help. This trend to redevelop malls into more like town centers, walkable, more urban environments, is the path we took for the modeling here. So we developed a new site plan based on the visioning work that was done for the county's Harbors Plan back in 2013. The site plan incorporates a mix of uses in the more urban block style of development, so with wide sidewalks and alleyways. And then we created this 3D model to visualize how much space this area really contains, around 85 acres, which you can do a lot with 85 acres, and ideas for what can be done within that space. So a reminder, these 3D visualizations are purely conceptual. They're just ideas, but they're useful for community planning, they're useful for beginning to have these conversations. So I'm going to fly you through the model in just a minute, but first, let's talk about Universal Plaza. We did the same thing with this site in Holiday. It's about 15 acres in comparison, and also a lot of commercial vacancies, a lot of flooding challenges at the site. We created a 3D model to visualize a more walkable, mixed-use environment that can blend in and provide recreational amenities to the surrounding neighborhood. So now, with staff's help, if you could please pull up that short video. I'm going to take you on a virtual helicopter tour.
It's not going to be pretty.
It's a shortened video. The full-length video is about 11 minutes. It's on our YouTube channel, and of course, we'll provide the county with the original files for both the short and long videos. Go ahead. So the shortened version starts here. This is a Google helicopter view flying through US-19 corridor. I think the footage is about, it's not the most recent footage, maybe.
Sam's Club on the right. Coming up on 54.
Mm-hmm. So we wanted to give a perspective of, you know, flying through the corridor, you can see a lot of different sorts of styles of development. And I want to thank the county for this drone footage, it was taken back in July. This is the Universal Plaza site, north of Moog Road and by US-19. You can see that there's really close proximity to established neighborhood. If it were raining that day, you'd see a lot of standing floodwater. And we're just moving behind these commercial properties. You can see the retention pond there. And now we're flying into the conceptual space where we looked at a redefined site plan so we can add some more connectivity throughout the site. It's more of a block-style development. It can integrate into the neighborhoods that surround it. We have a lot of vegetative buffer, buffering the commercial uses and the more intense uses from the neighborhood with an active recreational space, a park, a dog park, an expanded retention pond to help with the flooding issues. So that was the first concept. Second, Gulfview Square Mall. And I think this drone footage is really, really interesting to look at, a lot of surface parking spaces. You can see the new, well, somewhat new apartment complex that's there on the northern part of the site. And then, of course, the Salt Springs State Park is an incredible cultural and environmental amenity that's just beyond the site, and I think there's a lot of opportunity to connect people and, you know, incentivize developments that, housing developments in particular, that may be an attractive amenity for people to live right by there.
Sarah, can you freeze that just for a second?
Oh, maybe our staff can help. There we go.
So if you take a look at the back of the mall, when the apartments came in, I was trying to get them to say, you know, go as high as you can, right? No height restriction, go as high as you can, get the views. Darrell Leclerc, who developed Carroll and Parkway, when he came to Pasco County and met with EDC and the county commission, said, you got to go high, you got to go high. US-19 is so close to the water. Have you looked at pushing that as far as your 3Ds to say, if you go higher, you'll get much more value for these properties?
Absolutely. And you'll see that in just a second. And that's a really good point, because this site also has flooding issues, and if it were a rainy day, there'd be a lot of standing water right where that truck was. But we explored different ways with height to, you know, elevate the buildings so that if they're, you know, during the flood situations, the most critical components of a building are on the first floor, they're safe, they're on the second, third floors. Anything that's on the first floor is, in a sense, floodable. It could be a parking space. And then different sorts of amenities come through the site in the concept plan, really engaging with outdoor retail, as we noticed there's a trend moving in that direction. So you don't.
Just real quick, what I noticed is they've already started tearing down part of the mall to start building the multifamilies and the apartments behind there. So are they just going to continue to slowly deteriorate the mall as they build? Because I did notice that they've taken away JP Penney's and some of those.
That was not necessarily the scope of their study.
Right, right. This is just conceptual. This is what.
Well, you can see it as it's growing into a nicer area, is the point.
Yeah, that sort of phased approach, I think, is an organic way to make a big change in this area. It wouldn't happen all overnight. But, um, yeah, this is just, it can be used to kind of have conversations with developers, and the county can kind of guide the vision in saying that we want a more resilient, flood-proof sort of concept design that's mixed-use, it's walkable. This is more like a town center. It's an extension of, you know, the town versus this is the only, this is the place you go to shop. You can live, workshop in this same environment. So that was the thinking beyond the concept, and I do have a few more slides before we wrap up, and then I'll let you take questions.
I was just in West Palm Beach, and that's exactly what they've done to revitalize their downtown. It's amazing what they've done in West Palm Beach.
So my role is a lot of the technical side of things. The 3D visioning is where I play a big role in this. And then we have merged with our economic development staff to think about, okay, this looks really nice, but what might be the economic impacts of such style of development? So there are topics within the plan that cover that as well. So we have three recommendations. All three can better position the US-19 corridor for success in the 21st century and make it a corridor for economic activity, livability, and resilience. The first one is to prioritize mixed-use, walkable developments, transitioning key nodes from the suburban form to a more urban form. And this can be done by narrowing in on those key activity centers, developing partnerships with stakeholders in those areas. It doesn't happen overnight, but, you know, you create small area plans, you make sure that the county and the public. small-area plans, you make sure that the county and the public is leading the charge in formalizing a vision and development requirements for these areas. The second is to prioritize economic development and workforce housing. These new developments should integrate into the surrounding area and provide uses that complement housing and existing and new businesses. Page 46 of the report provides an overview of some of the economic analysis of these impacts of developing vacant or blighted land into more useful and community-supportive projects, and how the county's tax revenue can be affected by this. And finally, prioritizing sustainable and resilient development. We need to find ways to avoid or soften the blow when these flooding events occur, so we can do this by prioritizing more resilient construction and site design practices, like I mentioned, elevating the essential functions of buildings, designing areas to retain water purposefully that don't have to just look like a retention pond, they can be an active public space as well. So that, if or when a hurricane comes through, the flooding that's experienced is less impactful and importantly expensive to deal with. So in closing, it's a very exciting time to be in Pasco County, the Amazon announcement is very exciting. Our hope is that these visualizations and the technical analysis that went into these can generate interest and inspire modern 21st-century projects that can stimulate economic growth and success in our US-19 corridor. And with that, I welcome any questions and discussion, and thank you very much for your attention.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know, years ago, probably when the study started, I don't know if you guys had all the data as far as all the improvements we made in the flooding up and down. Right across the street, Holiday Hills used to flood out. There was a plan for 30 years that sat. The commission found a way to go through, solve the problem there. In the back of the mall, there was actually a pipe that's under the dirt road that was going through, as you access the back there, that was plugged, and they left it there. That's been removed, the water tends to flow out. To the north of it, Scenic Drive, we cleared that out, so the water can flow. We did one side of the road once, the next side, cleared all that out. A lot of the flooding that we've had, from Iron Bark, Ray Birch, Tim Brooks, Jasmine Lakes, Palm Terrace, will be solved as we take over the F2A plant. A lot of those things have actually been fixed quite well. We just had a big storm that I think everybody got a phone call on from Anthony Fossa, that a king tide was coming in, the winds were coming in, they were afraid up and down what was going to happen at 2:00 to 6:00 in the morning. And pretty much, from the people I talked to, really nothing negatively hurt us, so those king tides even, with, I think, the things we've done has gone on. So as much as you even think about having to build those structures up, in these past few years, even with the bigger storms coming in, relatively, there could be a couple of spots there, but we've got actually, I think, a good drainage system that's actually working on that area now. So as far as like bringing stuff in, I'd hate to see the flooding be a big part of the presentation as we're going forward, because, like I said, a lot of these things are being solved, have been solved, and it's a better situation than it was 10 years ago.
Absolutely, that's great to hear. And one other thing about the elevating of the buildings, I forgot to mention, is, you know, there's the flooding concern, you know, resiliency issues, but also sightlines, and just beyond the mall is a beautiful view of the Gulf. So it's, you know, once you reach a higher elevation, you can imagine the amenity of the sightline, so I think there's a lot of ways to think about increasing the heights of buildings and doing so in a designed way that's attractive.
Yeah, so I think if we could ever tweak this to show that height, especially in the back buildings, like, a primary one would be like the Sears building that's been sitting, and actually, the apartment guy actually tried to negotiate with them, they couldn't get to the numbers they wanted to make it work for him, he said. So now he's actually looking close to the hospital, but that's a classic one of going up to 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, whatever it is, and every one of those stories after like the third story, you've got a gorgeous sunset view every night. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I think another challenge in that area too, is to get, to deal with the septic to sewer. We've got a lot of people on the coastline that are on septic, that needs a switch. Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to call you, I'm a member of the ULI, and I'm 100% with you guys on what I think it's going to take to reactivate 19. And I would just say, in my opinion, the plan was too car-centric, so I just want to talk to you about being more pedestrian-friendly, and it's less costly to build all those roads, and there's more space available if we take out some of those roads, so I'm just making that comment.
Yeah, I'd love to connect with you on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David.
Oh, David, you're not speaking anymore? Wait a minute, come back up here. Well, I just want, okay, I'm not going to let too many, I'm not going to let any cats out of the bag, except to say, at a very high level, David, very, very high level, can we talk about anything about 19?
Well, what we can say is, because we are focused on strategic deliverables, we are in proactive conversations with several shopping center owners and some developers, and we are working now on an eight-story vertically-mixed-use-integrated building on an existing shopping center property which will be demolished. But it's, again, it's, we're working with the developer and the landowner, and we don't have a project yet.
Yeah, but-
And we're also getting organic interest-
Right.
-in developing Route 19. We have another inquiry from the state that's looking for high-rise construction along the Gulf, 15- to 20-story towers, and all of the shopping centers, the important locations on Route 19 are now under analysis by developers.
I mean, we're getting some of the big players from New York and Miami coming in. It's very exciting, and I think the next year on 19 corridor is going to be real fun to be working with.
Well, that's why I preface to say we're at an inflection point.
Yeah, yeah, it's really exciting what's coming, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are at R-63. No, no, R-62. Can't read my own writing. R-63 is at 1:30 in the afternoon.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development, this is PDD 220178. This is an appointment by each individual commissioner of a total of five Planning Commission members, and a collective appointment of one-at-large Planning Commission member by the Board of County Commissioners. So the reason why we're here is that the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to make some modifications to the way the Planning Commission was appointed last June, July 2021. Those modifications were adopted December 7, 2021, by the Board of County Commissioners under ordinance 2135, and then we were kind of waiting till the redistricting maps that came through, and then basically, the current Planning Commission members, Peter Hansel, Roberto Seis, and Christopher Poole reside in Commission District 2. The chairman, Charles Gray, resides in Commission District 3, and Jamie Girardi and Don Anderson reside in Commission District 4. So as a kind of like a history, Charles Gray, Peter Hansel, Jamie Girardi, and Roberto Seis have served on the reorganized Planning Commission since inception on August 9 of 2018. Chris Poole has served on the Planning Commission since December 10 of 2019. He took over for Kevin Ryman's when Kevin Ryman resigned. And Don Anderson was appointed on April 20 of 2021 to serve out the remainder of Commissioner Cox's term, which was set to expire on August 9, 2021. Most of those members were reappointed to serve a six-month term, and we're here to talk about appointment of individual members by the commission.
So the way I thought I'd handle this is, we'll go down, and Commissioner Oakley, do you have someone that you wanted to appoint to the Planning Commission?
I don't have anybody in my district.
It doesn't have to be in your district, it could be your appointment.
Chuck Gray.
Okay. Commissioner-
We're just doing the individuals, not the at-large right now.
Right.
I'm sure. Peter Hansel.
Okay. Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
And who was the at-large?
We haven't done that.
No, no, we'll do that large after we pick from the group that's on here. And it doesn't have to be-
We're picking right now who's in our district.
It doesn't have to be someone in your district, but it's your pick to pick on-
Your individual appointment, whoever you want.
We'll come back to you.
Don Anderson.
Don Anderson?
We'll go back to you.
Okay, Commissioner Mariana?
I'm going to go Roberto Seis.
I was going to ask for him at-large.
Roberto is very familiar with my district, he's not from my district, so I think it's a good fit for me.
Cool.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick? You said Don Anderson before.
I was going to say Don Anderson.
Okay. And I will be Jamie Girardi, and so we have one more at-large.
I was going to say Christopher Poole at-large, but-
I'm fine with that. We've got, okay, we've got one nomination for Chris Poole. Anyone want to suggest anyone else for the at-large? Okay, we'll leave it with Chris Poole?
We'll go with Chris.
Okay, I have no idea who was left that's not on there anymore.
Everyone, everyone is back on, which makes me very, very happy, I will tell you.
Okay. That is pretty funny.
Yeah, so just as editorial, because I want to provide editorial, this is the best Planning Commission you've had-
Okay.
...in the 19 years that I've been doing this job, so-
Well, we must think so too.
So can I have a motion from the board-
Okay.
Confirming the slate.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, great, well, that worked out. And, you know, they do that, they serve twice a month on that committee, just serving the people of Pasco County. And they take heat from people, heat from fellow, you know, businessmen, and I just am so grateful that they're willing to serve in that role. Commissioner Oakley.
Well, I'd like to say we were looking at something that I felt wasn't broken, because the individuals that were on this committee and have been on it for a long time, they actually did a very good job. They don't get paid, their job increased about double, meetings, I think, here in the last couple of years, but they really do a very good job at looking at projects for the citizens before it comes to us. And I think it's great they do that.
And, you know, you were gracious, and you don't have anyone in your district on the commission, but, you know, there may be a time when that, someone from your commission-
That changed, and, yeah.
Yeah. You have that opportunity in the future, or whoever follows you from that area.
We were trying to pick something that wasn't broken, because it was working very well.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, and I want to say, part of the reason I was pushing to get, we each had our own district representative if we wanted to go, was, so if we didn't feel we're getting that representation, we can make a change.
Right.
You know, Chuck Gray was my appointee when I first started, so glad you picked him, he's very familiar with the US-19 corridor, does a great job there as chair. All the other folks in there, I think, in these past several months have shown to be very responsible in decision-making every step of the way, and now I think that we each have control, if we're not like, if we don't like the representation we're getting, we can make a change. And that's what I want, that things are important for us to have that representation control.
Madam Chairman, if I can ask Denise one question, so that we don't get into the see a train coming. So, are they now staggered, or are they now all at the same time?
No, they now run with the commissioner-
Commission Districts.
...who appointed them, with the exception of the at-large, which is a four-year term.
Okay, thank you, that's, I just didn't want the Planning Commission to expire-
No.
-at one, at one sitting.
With each individual commissioner's term who appointed that.
Okay.
And they're all probably listening, going, "Yay!"
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe. Well, I didn't hear from anyone who said they didn't want to be on there. I think I heard from everyone-
Trust me, they're all saying yay.
No, they are, yeah.
Okay, we are to Commissioners' items. Commissioner Oakley.
Oh, that's great.
I run past meeting.
That's good, too. But I, I've got a message from a fellow by the name of Doug Sanders, been living in the Dade City area for a long, long time. He's a president historian group here in Pasco County. He brought to my attention about a marker there for Pasco County marker right there by 301, between my office and 301. There's a marker there, and it has the wrong date on it.
Oh.
So that marker and one for Lakucha and one for Trailby, I have asked Senator Simpson if he could see that those got made for us, and he said yes. So he's going to take care of it, I've given him all the information he needs for redoing those signs, and then when they come back, then we'll place them at appropriate sites. So changing one, it's 21 days difference in the marker-
It should be, it should be right.
It should be right, so that's going to be done, and thank Senator Simpson for his work in helping us achieve that without us spending any money, so it's good.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Whoops, just lost my spot on my phone. Just an update for the, from the TDC, I did want to give an update on their tourist development tax collections to the board. In November 2021, TDT collections were up 68% from November of 2020, or November 2021 TDT collections were up 42% over November 2019. So that tells you how incredible our tourism industry is actually doing here in Pasco County, and what an important role, you know, the tourism economy plays on Pasco County. So 2019 was a record-breaking year, pre-COVID, so have a month now in 2021 that beat 2019, that's really, really strong. So that's a testament to our DMO and all the great work that they're doing. Two more quick things, I do want to thank, I'll probably just let the chair talk about our trip, but I do want to thank, personally thank our legislators, not just our delegation, but all the legislators that met with us while we were in Tallahassee, I'll leave it at that, because I'm sure you're going to give an update, we don't all need to talk about the same thing. And then just for our team, I've been getting quite a few calls and messages from citizens in reference to State Road 56 and the amount of accidents that are happening there and the lack of patrol, not from our sheriff's office, because that's actually the state troopers. I know they're limited on resources, and I can appreciate that, but I'm just hoping that our team can somehow reach out, you know, again, and I have in the past, with our state police, our troopers, because it's, there's a lot of accidents, a lot of speeding going on. We had, unfortunately, there was a double fatality just a week ago, and those were actually kids drag racing, and this was during the daytime. This is happening on a regular basis. Actually, from where I live, you can hear them, it's so loud, you can actually hear them drag racing, not only in the, in the, during the day, but at nighttime, too. So if we can work together, it's also happening on County Line Road, I'm getting quite a few calls about the excessive speeding and racing on County Line Road for these young people with their souped-up cars, heck, you can hear their mufflers for miles away.
Commissioner Moore, can I add something to that?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Because I've also been getting calls, and actually had a meeting with some people on this, and we have a meeting coming up with the sheriff, and thank you for reminding me, because I'll bring this up, and maybe, I see his representatives are here. My understanding is, you know, typically, I think the highway patrol is supposed to do the state roads-
Correct.
-and the sheriff is supposed to do the local accident.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm talking about.
But I think things have changed here, and they've got some, the FHP doing some of the local road accidents, so if we could get, check on that-
Yeah.
-because there's only a few FHP people, and what I hear, what I've been hearing is that if you're in an accident, actually, my husband was in one, someone rear-ended him on Christmas Eve, you have to wait a really long time for an FHP person to come, and that was on Little Road, not on a state road, so we'll have that conversation, but yeah.
But anything we can do to reach out to FHP about traffic enforcement on State Road 56 and County Line, that'd be a huge help, just so our residents can obviously, you know, see that and be more comfortable, and hopefully act as a deterrent. I will talk to you, I think Andy already reached out to your team in reference to working with the city of Tampa on a possible signal on County Line Road, and that would be on the, to give my direction, it's going to be on the western, west of Bruce B. Downs, west of Bruce B. Downs. So I'll reach out to you, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Mariana, and I have a 12 o'clock, I've got a lunch meeting, so we're going to end at 12, and then we'll catch up after. Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Thank you. I did believe, I do believe that every auto accident, a state trooper does have to come out and do-
Only on state roads.
So, a couple-
Local roads too, I think you're, yeah.
Come out for every.
They have to come out for every.
But anyways, okay, so I just would like to say, I did attend the Light Up the Night
on Saturday. It's a great event to help raise awareness to human trafficking, and they also help support local human trafficking nonprofits and their victims. Of course, we mentioned, we had the resolution for PEPPN, so it was an honor to speak at their Great American Teach-In previously, of course- previously, of course. In the past year, I would like to thank Public Services and the Community Development. They were able to house 254 people. And we are still working on a nice list, but I would like to recognize them as well because we're honored to receive the award. They did receive an honor for Pasco County. It was a National Community Development Association recognizes Pasco County Community Development. It's the winner of the 2022 Audrey Nelson Community Development Achievement Award for the collaboration on the project of Rosalynn Reddoo residences. I would like to just touch base briefly about our trip to Germany and the apprenticeship program. I think it was really important. They do have the opportunity to have 15 students attend Germany. And a lot of times, we only send two or three students over to Germany, and meanwhile, they send their full amount here. And since we can't discuss it to sunshine, whether we start discussing it now or just bringing it aware, whether it's the Board of County Commissioners, the PEDC, the school board, or raising, having different communities help raise funds to send some of these students and help pay for their airfare, because the airfare is one of the constraints on why we do not send so many students overseas to participate in the apprenticeship programs. So maybe if we each pitched in a third of the price, or helped, or did fundraisers to help our students be able to go overseas.
Christina, do you have much more? Do you want to finish later, or? I'd like to hear what you have to say, but I have to, I have to go. And I think Commissioner Moore has a lot.
I got one offsite, yep.
Yeah, I'll say, finish later.
Great, but good comments. Okay, we'll recess for lunch, and we'll be back at 1:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll start with you when we start.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Hi, I'm Mike Napier, health officer for the Florida Department of Health here in Pasco County. We understand the toll the COVID-19 pandemic is taking on you, and we all want to get back to some normal. The best way to do that is to get vaccinated. Now, I know the vaccine distribution process has been frustrating, and we want you to know we're doing everything we can to improve that process. For starters, we're making the vaccine registration process much easier for you. The Department of Health and Pasco County Government have hired a new company to run Pasco County's COVID-19 vaccination registration through the CDR Health Pro Portal. This is the same company that's assisting registration in neighboring counties. And this partnership will greatly improve our online and phone registration experience. Just visit our website right here on your screen, or go directly to patientportalfl.com to see your vaccination locations in your area and to preregister. Please remember, you do have to preregister before you can get an appointment for your shot. We hear your concerns, and we know navigating the website can be difficult for some seniors. So a new feature we're offering is a call-in number. Grab a pen, it's right here. That's 844-770-8548. If you don't have a computer or just need help booking your appointment, call this number. Please, remember, there's limited vaccine and a lot of people to be vaccinated, so the call lines will be busy, and you might be asked to call back when the next batch of vaccine is available. We also have a callback feature for you. Just choose this option, and a member of the callback team will call you back. You won't lose your place in line either. Believe me, I share your frustration with the limited supply of vaccine Pasco County has received, especially because we have the ability to provide thousands of vaccines a week if we had that much to give. Our West Side Drive-Thru Vaccine Clinic is located at the south end of the Gulfview Square Mall, off US-19 in Port Ritchie. And we're also opening a drive-thru clinic on the east side at St. Leo University. Again, you'll need an appointment at both locations. Just register on the website or call the appointment line. Please do not call St. Leo University or Pasco County Government. While they are partners in our vaccine sites, they cannot answer questions about vaccine operations. The Florida Department of Health, Pasco County Government, and many of your community partners stand ready to vaccinate as many people as we get vaccine for. We are working on your behalf to get more vaccines in the coming weeks, and we thank you for your patience.
Hi, my name is Andrew, and we live here in the area, Pasco County. And I just want to tell you, our family absolutely love the library and the park system. For us, the library has been such a huge blessing to be able to take our kids here. They have so many great programs for little children and for kids of all ages, where they can just come and be kids and just have a great time. And we also love our park system because we can just take the kids to the playground, and they just love playing on there. And it's such a great experience for us just to bond with them through the different programs and being out in nature. We absolutely love the parks and the library.
This park has run its course through my life for the last 20 years, 20-plus years, actually. This park provides connection for myself, with the community, and with nature. You can tell, it's evidenced by the way they keep the grounds. The grounds here are immaculate, you know? If there's a piece of trash on the ground, someone who's walking by always picks it up. It's just that kind of a community and that kind of space that's been created. It's always well-maintained, well-groomed, and you can see that that love flows through everything that's here. And it's shadowed then on the people who visit here. Whenever you're walking, someone will say, hi, how are you doing? You know, how's your morning? There's never a lack of connection at this park. And it's, that is the reason why I love this park, and it is a huge asset to this community.
As a family of five, we didn't always have a huge budget to go out and do things, but we found everything we needed at the library, just from all the varieties of programs they've run. And the library system has really welcomed our family with open arms and made them feel special. And in turn, it's made my children want to read more, which is really a big break for me because it kind of rolls into them wanting to come home and do their homework, and then wanting to go to school and enjoying that. My oldest is 11, and he now goes to middle school. And he'll come to me pretty much every other day and tell me what book he's reading, and he's still really excited about it, years later, to pick up a book and just read it, which makes my mommy heart very, very excited.
Hi, I'm Sandy. This is my husband, Joe. And we enjoy coming to the park. Almost every day, we come and walk at least two and a half miles. We enjoy the fact that there's a lot of people that use this park. I've also used the library, and it's very accessible to people. You can set up internet access there. We have grandchildren that I take there for the children's activities. So all in all, I'm a big believer in having parks and libraries and things that the community can use.
We're the KFC Knitters, and we come here and we love the library. They're most generous to us.
Part of the draw to the area for us was the community park program. I have three children, and we utilize the park services very often. We have kids at cheerleading at the rec center, at football, at the fields. They go to summer camp here, they're gonna come to winter camp here. We're here every weekend. When they were little, we took them to the park constantly. That's where we made friends, that's where we met people, and that's where we felt that we became a part of the community. So it's been a very important part of our life.
I think the library is an integral part of our community. I'm here very often, and I see a wide range of ages. I see young children coming here for the pre-program. I see older people participating in the different community activities we hear, from the gardening programs that we have here, to the music programs, to the reading, using the computers. And it's absolutely wonderful to see so many people coming in and out, all different age groups, and using it in many, many different capacities, from the movies, the videos, the books, and.